Good evening, one and all. Welcome. This is a city council meeting, 7:00 o'clock Tuesday, March 27th. We're almost all in attendance. We'll have a roll call here in a moment, and maybe Sandy will be able to join us in the interim. Please rise for an invocation of our pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Oh heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us this spring season, a season of renewal, a season of growth. May we renew our love for the land, the sea, and the air which you've given us. May we grow in our care for others, others who may be stressed in the current economic times. May this spring bring the citizens of this city closer to you in everything we do. We ask for your guidance this evening as we conduct the city's business, for it is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unundergod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marie, please call the roll.
Councilmember McCannan.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Lofton.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Lord.
Here.
Mayor Cronin.
President.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
Attorney Halverson.
Okay, excellent. I'd like to move to the next item, reading the journal of previous meetings. You're having your possession in a joint meeting with the planning commission minutes from February 20th, and then the regular meeting we held on February 28th. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve. Second? Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? None heard, motion carries. I'd now like to entertain a motion to move item 10 on our agenda, which is a proclamation for the Red Cross. I'd like to move that up to this point on our agenda if we could.
So moved.
Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As you know, the Red Cross is an important part of the community, and they're represented here tonight by two of the representatives. Louise Walsh-Williams and David Johnson are both on the board, I gather. The other CEO. Look at my neck. Very impressive. We have a proclamation. We do this every year, and it's an important part of our starting the spring season, is to support the Red Cross. So I'll ask the administrator to read our proclamation, please.
Sure. The American Red Cross has touched many lives in the Low Country as well as across the country and around the world. During American Red Cross Month, we thank those who contribute to the mission of the Red Cross, whether through time, money, or blood. And we invite others to support the Red Cross in helping people in need down the street, across the country, and around the world. The American Red Cross is synonymous with helping people, and has been doing so for more than 130 years. Throughout the past year, the American Red Cross launched hundreds of disaster relief operations in the United States to help people affected by fires, floods, hurricanes, and tornadoes. The American Red Cross also supported major international disasters, including the Japan earthquake and tsunami response, while continuing its work on the 2010 Haiti earthquake response and recovery. In the Low Country, the Red Cross works tirelessly to support us when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood, or the comfort of a helping hand. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. For nearly 100 years, United States presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross and its humanitarian mission. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, and because it is not a government agency, the Red Cross depends on support from the public to continue its humanitarian work. This is especially important in these challenging economic times, which impact the Red Cross and many people in our community and across the nation. Now therefore, I Dick Cronin, Mayor of the City of Isle of Palms, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of the City of Isle of Palms of the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 2012 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this 27th of March in the year of our Lord 2012, and of the City of Isle of Palms, South Carolina. Dick Cronin, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution, as read.
So moved.
Seconded. And seconded. I'm assuming there's no discussion. Would you like to address us?
Mayor, Councilman, thank you, our board member David Johnston, for being here with us. Every time I come to the Isle of Palms, somebody says to me, "I still have my Red Cross bucket from Hugo." And I just wanted to thank you tonight for your support, and assure you that the Red Cross will be here. Let's hope and pray. We don't have another Hugo, but we prepare year-long for catastrophic events such as Hugo, in addition to the other things that you just read. So in fact, we are prepared to open more shelters in time of a catastrophic event than any Red Cross chapter in the nation, other than Tampa Bay. That's never a title I hope to hold. Thank you for your support, and we'll be here for it.
Thank you again. I'd now like to administer the oath of office to our new municipal judge, who I know is in the back of the room here. If you'd meet me down front here.
He loves kind of red stuff.
He just ran from me.
He put him through the red bull.
Who is that mask crusader?
Oh, is that right? Yeah. We forgot to vote on the proclamation. Just don't forget to vote on the proclamation.
Mayor, you should've wore your cape.
I think the cape is here.
I like this.
That works better than that.
See you later again.
He looks like his mother, doesn't he?
I've heard that line before.
I hope he grows out of it.
All right. You're gonna stand between us?
You're gonna get it.
Your father's gonna stand between us. You're gonna be in the picture, though, don't worry. He knows the drill. He's gonna raise his right hand and read it, and decide after me. I, Michael Maloney.
I, Michael Maloney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve and protect and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
And as city judge for the City of Isle of Palms Municipal Court.
As city judge for the City of Isle of Palms Municipal Court.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And skill.
And skill.
Exercise the trust proposed in me.[493.12][493.12][S29. Exercise the trust proposed in me. And will use my best endeavor to preserve.[497.12][497.12][S29. And will use my best endeavor to preserve the peace. And to carry into effect.[501.12][501.12][S29. And to carry into effect. According to law.[503.12][503.12][S29. According to law. The purposes for which I have been doing.[506.12][506.12][S29. The purposes for which I have been doing. To help me God.[509.12][509.12][S29. To help me God. Well.
Thank you so much for giving me the honor of being the municipal judge here. Emmett's holding our family by one that my daddy gave me when I was, I didn't say before. I'm thrilled. It's been a pleasure being your lovable, ability court judge, and I look forward to being full-time. Emmett, thank you.
I suggest you read it.
Good job, Emmett.
Doing this a little backwards, but I'd like to have a motion to approve Michael Maloney as our city judge. You're good. Go home. Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're moving on, citizens' comments. I have a number of citizens I would like to address council this evening, so I'll call you an order, which you called in. Diana Ultorick, you hear her, there she is. You know the drill.
I do know the drill. Diana Ultorick, 15 Ocean Park Court. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here to just simply tell you that the loan closet that we've been talking about for several months is now fully supplied and in operation, and I've already had a phone call from someone who wanted one of the medical assistance devices that I had hoped to get and haven't gotten, which is a walker with a seat. So if anybody knows, if anybody that has one of those, or would like to procure one, I do have three walkers. I have three walkers, three potty chairs, three wheelchairs, and three sets of crutches. That's 12 devices, which is all that will fit in the 40 by 60 inches, so generously given to us by Ann Graham. Thank you very much, Chief Graham. And her folks, her captains on duty, have just been amazing, allowing me access getting in and out. And I just, this has been a long journey since last July, and we finally have this operational, and I'm very pleased to report that to Council night. And I do want to acknowledge Sterling Halverson, because that waiver is something we haven't had to use yet, which we would have if I could've had a walker with a seat. Hopefully that will come. So thank you very much for your support, Council. And if anybody knows, anybody that has a walker with a seat, I'm looking for one.
All right.
Thank you.
Duly noted. Okay, Scott Savoy. Scott, Scott? Scott? Not present. Julie Nessler. Gary, you suffered, or?
She's always fresh.
My name's Julie Nessler, and I live at 3125th Avenue. And I'm here to just comment on, excuse my voice, I'm just, my allergies are rough tonight, to comment on Crabpot Players, and wanting to tell you about the goodness behind Crabpot Players. My daughter Aspen, who's over here, who's nine, her first play that she auditioned for, Jimmy Ward, she was five years old, almost five, wasn't, didn't know how to read yet, and efficiently, and she was going to have a walk-on role. Jimmy Ward gave her 10 lines, I think, and she was so determined, so determined to do a great job for him. She's, for the last five years, she's been in every one of Jimmy Ward's plays, with the exception of one. There's so much goodness around Crabpot Players. Not only does it teach the children about commitment, taking care of others when you're on the stage, having each other's back, humor of all things, and it has fostered, in the last five years, it has fostered so many wonderful friendships, that she, I would say, would maybe not have, because she goes to school in West Ashley, so that by the time we get home, she really doesn't have that opportunity to make friendships and connections as if she were coming home a few hours earlier and going to school on the island. She has maintained these friendships, and there's not, there's not a time that she just does not recite a line from one of the plays, and use it appropriately, in the most sarcastic humor. And we giggle, even two nights ago, we were commenting, Gary and I were commenting about her sense of humor, and we were bragging about which side of the family it came from. And she says, neither. I got my sense of humor from Jimmy Ward. It is just, on so many levels, it's nothing but positive. And there's so much, there's so much that goes into the plays, with the children and the camaraderie between all of the kids, it's just beautiful to see. And I am just hoping that everything can continue. That is my hope, for the goodness of all of these kids, and all of the true lessons that are learned within those walls of the Magnolia Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Nebraska.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so, my name's Mackenzie Fowler, and I'm an actor with Crabpot Players.
You better tell us your address.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. It is.
This is on a stage direction.
252 Forest Trail, Isle of Palms, South Carolina. Okay, so, well, Crabpot, oh, wait, the first thing I'd like to say is, now, Crabpot Players doesn't only teach how to act in any play, but it teaches good techniques that people need in everyday lives. An example of that is this. I mean, Crabpot Players gave me the courage to be able to speak in front of adults or on a stage. And Crabpot teaches the importance of being late very well, which is a very important thing that we need in life. But, well, what?
Wait.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so, not being late, yeah. Well, yeah, yeah, okay. So, but without Crabpot, we would be very sad.
She was Amy.
And we would miss Crabpot really bad, all of the children that were in the plays. And we make a lot of friends and have a lot of fun with all the plays. And being with Crabpot Players is a wonderful experience that I think everyone should have the opportunity to enjoy, and I also have a poem.
Okay.
Yeah. Crabpot Players, what should I say? They influence lives every day. We were taught the basics of going on stages and memorizing a whole lot of pages. Courage is brought and strengthen your voice. Please, oh please, make a good choice. Keep Crabpot Players forever to stay, and don't make us children cry every day. Thank you.
Nicely done. Amy Cohn? Did I say it right?
Hello, my name is Amy Cohn. I live at 7 Tabby Lane, and I'm here to talk about Crabpot Players as well. In the 10 years that I've lived here, my nieces, my nephews, my neighbors, my friends, have all had the experience of volunteering or working with Crabpot Players. Their parents, their uncles, their grandparents have all had the wonderful experience of watching the result of those efforts. And for Crabpot to leave the island would just be a crime. They bring so much good to the island and ask nothing of anybody, and I really, really would hate to see them leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
Gary Nessler, I live at 3125th Avenue, with my daughter Aspen and my wife Julie. And I'm here to also give a resounding support for maintaining what you have just heard, seemingly is an institution for the island, a cultural institution. And I think we not only have a commitment to the children and the parents, our tourists who come year after year look forward to it, but we also have a responsibility to the community to really kind of let this be the cornerstone of our cultural being on the island. Having seen Jimmy Ward now a Councilman, so again, congratulations, really balance his experience, his work-life, his commitment to these children, as I have seen it over the years, having the opportunity to work with Jimmy, it really is unparalleled. And I think that if Crabpot Players are forced off the island, I agree with our neighbor on Tabby Lane, that not only would be a crime, it would be a shame, and it would be embarrassment to the city. We pride ourselves on our ability to invite our communities around, so we have children who come from Out Pleasant, newly formed friendships that actually then result into friendships with their parents. And I cannot remember, Jimmy, and please correct me if I'm wrong, or don't correct me if I'm wrong, that since you started Crabpot Players, tickets have been sold out night after night after night, even before the event actually started. So that alone is a very strong statement for the success of Crabpot Players. But again, I think what you have done, you know, in the past, have provided these children with a cultural experience, and in my closing comment, it is absolutely the foundation of our cultural community, and we would plead and expect for the council and others to keep it and maintain it as it is. And you have parental support and community support, you know, without question, so thank you.
Thank you. Michael Wolfman.
Hi, Mike Wolfman, 130 River Landing Drive on Daniel Island. And I hate to come up and make a complaint after all that. They sounded so nice. I'm calling, coming to you about the parking revision that was done on 8th Street by Mr. Harris. He actually did a very nice job out there. My exception comes to the number of spaces that he proposed and ended up with, and I'm sure I'm not privy to the communications between him and the state, but I'm sure you guys have a overall say in the final outcome on that. After going by there for the past few days, there are, at best, four parking spots for maybe compact cars. I go there quite often to enjoy the beach. I'm a year-round resident. I know Mr. Harris is from Connecticut, and is a, I'm not sure how much time he spends there, but once again, I'm a year-round resident and pay my dues to the South, South Carolina, and I would not like my rights of parking taken away during the summer months. I'm sure he does come down and enjoy time with his, he said, with his grandchildren. I met him tonight, actually, and we had a very nice conversation. And I'm empathetic to his, to his needs and the facts that a lot of times, his property is abused by people who don't take that consideration. But I don't think everybody should be penalized for the acts of others. And I think what it's gonna do is open a Pandora's Box into a whole list of other problems between homeowners there. If one person can jump ahead of the game and get their trees planted, they're gonna force the parking onto their neighbors, and that's gonna create problems. And I think during the busy months, he's gonna create a lot of problems between people who come here and try to park there. Because if you do go by there, just to get on those parking spaces that he has created, it's gonna be very difficult. The trees that he's planted in those spaces, it's gonna make it difficult to maneuver into those places. So once again, do I have an easy answer? I mean, you guys, you're all familiar with the parking problems that you're dealing with, but I don't think by allowing people these exceptions that are run through the state, that is quite the answer. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I had on my list. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council? None heard, we'll move on. Thank you very much. I have reports of standing committees. I'll give you a report of Ways and Means Committee. We met at 5:45 on Tuesday, March 20th. I think we were all present. We heard from our treasurer. The treasurer reported that we are two-thirds of the year complete, which would mean 67% of our budget. We are in fact running our expenditures at 58%, which means we're under budget on virtually all of our city departments and expenditures. Our revenues, however, are running at only 55% of budget, and that's because the collections from Charleston County are late. We're experiencing a delay in their distribution to us. We find that the other municipalities in the area are also receiving their funds late, and our city administrator has also started a dialogue with the county, trying to figure out how we can improve that distribution cycle. We did receive $650,000 after the close of business in February, which puts it at 70% of budget, but still, it's late, and far later than it had been in the past, so we're gonna stay on top of that. On a cash-on-hand basis, we're running now over 31% of our annual general fund expenses, which is at or slightly above our target, so that's very good information. Our tourism-related funds, municipal accommodation fees continue to move on, continue to be 11% over prior year's numbers. That's very good. We've received nothing from the state. Our hospitality tax, we received some payments, some of which had been previously due prior months, so a couple of our restaurateurs are getting caught up, and so we're now at the same level we were prior years, so, last year. So that's looking better. We had a project report on our beach restoration, our dredging in our 53rd to 57th Avenue, and I'm certain our committee reports will cover them in more depth, but our beach restoration is under work. We have Baker Infrastructure Group working diligently right now under the show management project that we initiated. The dredging is moving along. In fact, we may actually complete the dredging yet this week, which is actually very good news to get it out of the way, at least from our docking standpoint. And 53rd to 57th Avenue still remains an open project for us. We have funds on hand because we are gonna have to pay for the movement of some, of a line in that project involved in the village within Wild Doones, but that will be dealt with here shortly. We also sat as a group and discussed the results from all the committees, as far as what are the key projects that the city should be working on and focusing on in the future. And we all agreed that the, I'll read them here, that the following projects are the key projects for the city to focus on that are large projects, anything over a quarter million dollars. That is continued drainage projects, 42nd to 52nd Avenue, to increase our disaster recovery fund, work with the recreation ball field, particularly the lightings only, see if we can't get that executed, to work on bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure additions on the island, to work on an island-wide parking system, which everybody is familiar with, and then to continue our pursuit of South Carolina electric gas to execute underground wiring to improve the reliability of power upon the island. So those projects were agreed to by council as the key projects that we'd be focusing on, and staff will be paying attention to as we go forward. We did discuss a beach walkover and the use of a particular material, a perma-track material, but that was deferred to a later time when we could receive more information on that project. We then moved into some recommendations from Real Property Committee in particular, and that is the award of change orders to our dredger, Marko Dredging, in the appropriate approximate sum of $29,500 for four amendments or changes to our contract, and that's for adding hours, in particular, I think it was 59 hours of dredging, because they have run into hard material, the intercoastal effort behind the fuel dock, behind the tidal wave dock, and near the restaurant dock. Those 59 hours and the cost thereof are in line with our contract in the event that they did run into hard material. And that was approved by Ways and Means, so I'll make it as a motion for council to approve $29,500 to come from our contingency fund on this project.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. We had another motion before Ways and Means, and that was a recommendation from Real Property to award a sole-source contract for Low Country Marina. This is due to the actual result of the dredging, and this is to remove, construct, and install a new floating dock for the tidal wave water sports area. And this was in the sum of $24,400 that had previously been budgeted in the effort for tidal wave water sports, originally budgeted for engineering work, I believe.
Yes.
From the Marina Fund, we will apply those funds for this purpose. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? The dock has already been removed, and the dredger is. The dock has already been removed, and the dredger is working in that area, has finished that area, I believe. So, we need to get a dock back in there here shortly. Any other discussion? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We went through, finishing the Ways and Means report, we went through our operating budgets for 2012, 2013. We went through a fair amount of detail on each of the departments. And suffice it to say, we have established a scheduled workshop for the Ways and Means Committee to meet on April 17th, where we go through not all of the operating budgets, but the capital budgets. In addition to that, we will have by then a projection for revenues for the calendar, for the year 2012, 2013. And the treasurer is hoping to give us a forecast of where we're gonna finish out this year, so we'll know where we're likely to finish this year, and then what's ahead of us for next year, and we'll work to the budget as is more formal and more final. So, that's, that's, in essence, from the workshop, dating the workshop. We were, well, that'd be reported on from the Real Property Committee. We have one more item on our agenda, and this is a, an item that was not included in the Ways and Means Committee report. It's gonna be covered on the public safety, so I'll defer that to the public safety report. I get carried away when we're spending money. I was gonna spend money again. Okay. We, again, will be meeting as Ways and Means on April 17th, and so I encourage anybody interested, please come and attend. That's the report on Ways and Means. Any questions? None heard? Let's move on. Public safety, please. Marty is out of town, so Barb is.
Oh, mine? Okay. Yeah. All right, I'm standing in. Public safety met on March 15th. Everyone was in attendance. We had an update on the information on the connector run. Kristin Powers, representing the connector run, joined the committee for a progress report. The majority of the businesses were contacted about the added celebration post-race, anticipating more people in attendance and staying in the vicinity longer. Businesses included in the discussions were Acme, the Banana Cabana, Ben &amp; Jerry's, Coconut Joe's, Huck's, Lucan Ollies, Seabiscuit, Windjammer, Mingos, Island Mermaid, and Splash. Each business has been offered a free vendor-sponsor space in order to sell food and merchandise. The connector committee is hoping to increase the size of the race, and they're looking for about 1,000 participants. There are also, due to this after-race sort of celebration, there's going to be sort of a beer garden, and it has to be, obviously, a lot of logistics confining it and taking care of the legalities of who can buy beer. It's all going to be fenced off. There's also going to be a band, which hasn't been finalized exactly where it will be, but probably near the corner of the public safety building. So, they move on, they're very excited, they're marketing it, they're hoping to help market it with the realtors, hoping the realtors will have special rates for that weekend, so make it a destination for these people in the race, keep them on the island an extra day, which would be great. Going on to new business, we started discussing our part of the parking job, and line-of-sight clearance at intersections was one thing. Marty referred to the new no-parking-here-to-corner signs that have been installed on Palm Boulevard. I think they're a great step for safety on the island. It allows anyone pulling out the number streets onto Palm to be able to see oncoming traffic, so that's a, it's a, it's a good start. We started to discuss the, whether we're gonna charge for parking and that whole different system, and I suggested that we need to know, first of all, the legalities of the parking restrictions on the island before we move forward. And the committee agreed that the city attorney should be tasked with answering that question before any more time or money is invested in planning. The mayor commented that restricting parking in the neighborhoods and pay-to-park are two separate initiatives that overlap. To eliminate parking in the neighborhoods will require more signage, a great deal of control, and a pass system. Obviously, a very complicated problem that we will be working on every month. Administrator Tucker suggested a demonstration project related to parking and, for our consideration. Very interesting. I think the bottom line was that we will, we're waiting for a cost estimate, but perhaps we'll have some beach service officers that will be tasked as permanent parking babysitters, permanent people in the neighborhoods, so people come into the island, when they park, they see someone. I mean, the, these beach service officers could tell them, "No, you can't park here, it's too close," or, and, just, just be a presence, so people in the neighborhoods understand and feel that the city is trying to do something to alleviate the bad behavior of people parking. So, that, we will wait and see, because that's gonna entail some, some monies, radios, for example, uniforms, so we'll, we'll wait for that. So, I think the committee agreed that instead of establishing it from Palm and Breach to Tent, that Breach to Tent was a more realistic demonstration project, so we'll move on from there. We, of course, also went over the budgets. Bottom line, the overall fire department FY13 budget has a 2% increase over FY12, and the police department is a neutral, flat, no increase, no decrease. The fire department highlights, February's a short month, and it was a slow month. I guess that's pretty good news when you're in this business. The personnel from the department assisted in the search in Francis Mary National Forest for a missing female on February 17th. On the 19th, they responded to a report of a boat leaking diesel fuel at the dock behind Morgan Place Drive. They placed absorbent booms in the water to contain the leak. In February, personnel responded to 34 total calls, 13 were EMS calls, and we have hired a fire inspector replacing the one that left, and he will start, he has started. The chiefs, again, an ongoing battle, both chiefs were involved in several meetings about the transition to the Charleston County Consolidated Dispatch System, which is a thorn in our side, frankly. Sorry. Marty didn't say that.
You have an opinion.
Yeah, yeah. It's a challenge, right? The police department, during the month of February, the department had no significant calls. Dispatchers received a total of 40, 4,206 calls in the month, 3,560 were the police department. Officers made 360 traffic stops that resulted in 76 tickets. There were eight noise complaints for the month, and four warnings were issued. Again, pleasantly slow month with not, not a disaster in sight. I meant to ask Administrator Tucker, as you may know, Army Wives is done filming. They were with the Windjammer, and they had my street closed off, but I was gracious about it. Do we know when the Army, it's gonna be shown?
I do not have that answer yet. So, we can certainly post something on the website when we do have the answer, so everybody can look for it.
Okay, the next public safety meeting is 5:00 PM on April 12.
Before we get to that item, was the Army Wives, was that a good experience for the Army?
I think so. I had no problems with it, yeah.
Anybody, any feedback? I didn't have any complaints, that's always a good.
I wasn't offered a job, so.
That's a complaint. Yeah, I, it's always, it astounds me that, you know, they built a beach walkover and made it look old, and now it's gone. So, the amount of money spent to do, we'll see how many minutes.
And Donnie wanted to build one?
So.
Well, good. Because we need this sort of feedback, and if we catch any more in the next few weeks as we travel around the island, it'd be good to, because Army Wives, A, may wanna come back again, or some other grand movie may wanna.
I'm hoping for Mary Ellis's beach house. It's not filmed out of Palm. Okay, moving on to consideration of award of contract in excess of $10,000 for the city's 25% share of Charleston County's grant to purchase mobile data terminals as budgeted in FY12 budget for the purpose of placing MDTs in fire apparatus as specified for transition to consolidated dispatch system. So, move?
Are you gonna make a motion?
I so move.
There's a motion?
Second.
And seconded. I'd ask the city administrator, please explain to them.
Sure, I will be glad to. First of all, just to emphasize, we budgeted in the FY12 budget, our current year, $18,000 on the fireside for eight mobile data, data terminals. The amount that we, that's in question tonight, all of this sort of jumped from, we knew it was gonna happen, to imminent since the public safety meeting and the Ways and Means meeting. And a lot of it has to do with the fact that we're a little bit at the mercy of the consolidated dispatch scheduling in Charleston County, because they contacted us and said they wanted to come install these units. And we have been pressing them for a price for a while, because we knew that we had a process that we needed to go through associated with procurement. So, that's why it has jumped to the agenda tonight. The amount is $11,075.68. That's our part, our 25% of a grant that the county received to purchase these mobile data terminals, and we will actually pay that to the county, not directly to the contractor, which we have learned since this was done for the agenda. There will be other expenses, so, in addition to this $11,075.68, but they're smaller, they do not exist, they do not exceed the $10,000 toggle for, for city council action, and will be well within the $18,000 that was budgeted. We had actually rebudgeted the same $18,000, because we weren't sure that this was gonna close this year, but it now appears that it will, and, and so, you know, it became time-sensitive that we take an action tonight.
Is that enough, chief? Is this?
Yes.
Is there, is there, are they gonna surprise us tomorrow with something else?
No.
No?
We just had our kickoff meeting about.
As everyone's aware, we're moving towards consolidated dispatch. We're having more and more meetings. There have been several meetings recently in reference to the MDT, mobile data terminals. And as Linda said, things are kicking up. Don't expect any more large bills from this. This is the portion we're paying to the county, and this is a port security grant that was started back in 2008, and it wasn't awarded until June of 2011, and the numbers are just now firm as a result of the meeting that we had in Charleston just a couple of weeks ago.
Mike, are we gonna be able to use these terminals prior to the central dispatch, while our own dispatch?
Yes. And actually, it's, it's a good thing we're getting them early, so we can get used to them. It's gonna be a learning curve involved. And there is a five-year bumper-to-bumper warranty, so to speak. If, say, one's dropped, if it breaks under normal routine use, it's gonna be replaced. If somebody drops it in the ocean, if we can get it back, it's, it's five years, bumper-to-bumper for the entire unit.
Okay, but we are gonna be able to use?
Yes.
This in the interim, before we even get to the center?
Yes.
Okay. And you see a benefit to the use of these things?
Well, you need to learn what we're doing before we're forced to know what we're doing.
Sandy?
Just, are these the size of a laptop or a handheld radio?
They're about that size.
Okay, tablet?
Yeah, they're real small, and they're gonna have air cards, and they also have an automatic vehicle locator built in.
So, we could, we put the GPS or the code into our phones, we can follow the trucks around the area?
Quite possibly.
Any other, Michael?
Yes, Mayor, what's the update on the communication tower? Is it up at 100% functional right now?
The tower on Allo Palms is 100% functional. At some point, the smaller tower's coming down. Phase one and phase two of the three-phase project is complete for the entire county. Phase three should be completed by June. We are having some minor setbacks throughout the county right now, mostly east of the Cooper, not exactly sure why, and it all seemed to stem after a major storm, so we're trying to figure that out now.
What is the holdup of taking down the monitor, the small tower?
The big tower has not been signed off on yet. Until the testing and everything's complete, and every single thing that needs gets transferred over happens, then they, they just can't take it down.
When we first approved this project and everything, and they said they would do this on a pretty timely basis, is, you know.
Timeliness is going up. They didn't mention timeliness coming down.
I'd like to see us be able to tell the, you know, I think the residents around that tower have been very patient. I'd love to see a timetable when that small tower's gonna come down.
I can try to get something. It's gonna be approximate, and it's probably gonna go over that, but I can get a date.
Okay.
Try to hold them to it, but.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Second, the award of $11,075.68 payable to the Charleston County for the mobile data terminals for the fire department. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, motion carries. Thank you. All right, that'll be it for public safety, I trust. Moving on to public works, please.
Thanks, Mayor. The regular meeting of public works committee was held Wednesday, March 7th, four, all committee members were present. We had some citizen comments. We had, Beth Bellow had talked about wanting or discussion of recycled bins on the, on the beach. So, we've discussed it before in the past, it's hard to maintain those recycling bins because everything goes into it, so. But we're gonna look into what other beach communities are doing, whether they're having any type of good results, and if they are, what practices they're using.
That's correct.
Correct. Maintenance reports, the director reported priorities for February have been rights-of-way landscaping, some tree trimming, basically spring, spring trimming. In addition to sand shell, maybe perhaps you all noticed, was delivered and spread on the inland side of Palm Boulevard from 21st to 41st Avenue. Our garbage collection for the month was similar to that of last year. We continued some discussion on recycling bins. Hopefully, that will be able to roll into the rolling carts or single stream within the next few months. So, that's, that's the word on the street. We end up talking about our, we already did that prioritization. We had some discussion of the ingress and egress over at the public works building. While this is kind of a joint operation between us and the real property, but the layout for that and how we're gonna utilize that property over there where the building was torn down, that's still in discussion. We did go through our review, our operating budget for the next budget cycle. That will continue through our budget workshop. We went on to discuss what our committee was tasked at from the parking, going parking meeting, an island-wide signage. We've got some information on the signage and trying to utilize, trying to figure out what we can do as a committee to alleviate some of our parking problems with our island-wide signage. We've got some information that we still need to work on for directional parking, direct people to the public lots. Obviously, the parking from, from here, from no parking here to corner, if the sign's been put up, and we'll, from 21st to 41st, we'll be able to try to determine where else that we can utilize those signs as well. Like I said, this will be ongoing as well, but we'd like to try to get some of the parking, the parking signage going at the entrances on the connector. We had some discussion about the path that we were tasked at, the path at the Citadel Beach Club. We would have to go through and get permission from the Citadel Beach Club to access, let's say, a right-of-way or easement down their property to allow people to walk up that way. But it was also brought up by the director that commented the idea that the residents of 48th Avenue have some serious flooding issues down there, and perhaps it would be a good idea to work with them in when we put in our flooding program to, you know, put an easement of that street where we can go through and have a pedestrian walkway as well as a drainage easement. So, we're gonna work forward on that as well. As obstructions in the wider, and obstructions in the right-of-way, while this has been a problem for many years on Allo Palms, and we've had some ordinance that's come out before city council in the past that have not taken any action, and I think it's, and when asking the, the director of the building department of why the, while some of these rights-of-way obstructions are gone, and then they show up later, you know, and he says he does not have an enforcement mechanism, so I, I'd recommend that we bring that, that ordinance back up to city council again for more discussion. And we'll, I believe that we're gonna have to move forward on it, so that it will give the departments some teeth to, to work forward on it.
Do you know where to find that in the files?
Yes, I do.
All right, good.
What else we talk about? Consider, with perma-track. Consent with PermaTrack, discussed that. Our next meeting is April 10th, where we'll continue some of the parking issues and solving some of those parking problems. Okay. And the only question I have is, and I haven't, because I've been out of town, but the reports or the applications from the SCDOT that we need to move forward on that. So, I know that paperwork is.
Are you talking about the signage?
Correct, for our steep, free print signage and that information. So, I know we.
That was the question I had, is I know we got information from, but it was.
It has not.
Not saying it's in DOTEs.
Right.
You have to interpret what they say, and then whenever we put a plan together, they have rights to approve.
Prove it, correct.
I'm not sure we have the resources to do that. If we need to hire a sign engineer, there's got to be people around here, transportation engineer, somebody who could do it for us, is probably prudent use of time, because they'll do it quickly, and it will meet the DOT requirements before we go back and forth seven times.
And that's one thing that Councilman Carroll had brought up numerous times, is the idea that we'd bring somebody on as a traffic engineer to figure out where these signs perhaps need to go to work with our parking problem. Not only work with the sign, but perhaps direction, flow of traffic, and some other issues as well.
Well, if you think that's important, you'll task the staff to go.
I would agree.
Does anybody have any objection to that?
Absolutely not. I think it's a very wise decision.
So, staff will find us a transportation, traffic engineer that can first take on the task of looking at all the signage, A, that's in place, and B, that we could add to augment and improve the movement of vehicles to commercial lots and the like. You must have a question.
Well, no, I don't have a question, but I'd just a comment. I think the city's greatest chance for success with getting the signage that we're hoping for, so that people are not confused about where to go when they arrive on the island for parking, would be to have a professional involved, because they can advocate on our behalf better with SCDOT to maximize the amount that we can do. I think if we try to do it on our own without that expertise, then we're going to, we'll be starting at a disadvantage, I'm afraid.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor?
We agree.
One last, not only on for signs, but SCDOT, you know, the right-of-ways and everything else. I mean, there's a lot of gray area out there that I don't think we totally understand as a city. And I think a traffic, you know, engineer could help us better understand what can and what cannot happen alongside the roads besides just the signs.
Well, let's get somebody who can do the signs, and if he's competent enough, we'll just keep him going.
Thank you very much.
We got a lot of things to tackle in this regard, so the signs are something I think we can get our arms around here across it quickly and make an impact.
Mr. Mayor, a brief comment. I just think that we're really going in the right direction here. This is like what we should have been doing. I'm really glad to see we're going to get some professional help.
Very good. Any further comments on the public works report? All right, moving on. Recreation committee, please.
Yeah, the recreation committee met on March 14th. Everyone was in attendance. As in every month of the year, the rec center is a beehive of activity. Nearly 500 people paid to attend the Blues Bash. Over 80 dogs completed the doggy day at the rec. While coed volleyball just concluded with a double-elimination tournament, spring adult softball, and adult 3-on-3 basketball are just beginning. We had a half-pitch tournament, half-rubber tournament, sorry. First pitch, half-rubber tournament was held on March 24th. While basketball, youth basketball's winding down, youth baseball's opening games are scheduled for March 31st. The rec staff is always going above and beyond their normal duties to help the city. They began putting the white lines on Palm, so you can thank Norma Jean and her crew for getting out there very early on Thursday mornings to put the lines up. We know that's increased the safety on Palm. Sheila Redman, another employee of the rec, in addition to her regular duties, has made new palm tree stencils to help out the garden club that are put on all of our trashcans every year. I was involved with Marty and Brian Duffy painting those one year, and let me tell you, it's a lot of work, and those stencils are a great, great asset. To give you an idea of how busy the rec building is, it was made available for our citizens for 352 hours in the month of February. Our committee also began looking at the island-wide parking plan and the issues we've been charged with. The committee basically concurred that their piece of the parking puzzle would have to wait until the basic plan was worked out. In other words, where will parking be allowed on Palm, for example? We'll continue to discuss this over the next month. I think we also concurred that bike racks is something a little questionable. I personally don't know anyone who rides to the end of the path, parks the bike, and then walks on the beach. Everyone I know rides to the beach. That's the object of the bicycle, but we'll keep looking at that. Committee member Ward reported on a letter he had sent to the Attorney General's office. The reply to his letter has been distributed to council members. Wading through the seven-page letter, which is obviously legalese, it seems pretty clear that any city council member is precluded from being employed by the rec department as an instructor. Perhaps it would help if Councilman Ward would post the letter on his social media and Crabpot pages for his supporters to read, so they can firsthand see and understand the constraints put on any municipal elected official. There isn't a person in this room that's not for the Crabpot players. That's really not the issue. I'd make a note that the Crabpot Players plays our program as are all the programs of the rec. They're not determined by the city council, and they're determined by the staff and Norma Jean's very qualified staff. So, it's the rec department's decision as to what programs will be offered, not the city councils. Bev Ballow came before us, Bev was busy, to suggest that the rec consider holding a fair celebration to educate the citizens on our island, its history and habitat, perhaps calling on many local organizations, Birds of Prey, Turtle Team, the Aquarium, DNR, Native Plant Society, just to name a few. The committee looked on this favorably, and hopefully will work with Ms. Ballow to move this forward. The past, this past month, two citizens stepped up, Kay and David Burner, who live in Wild Dunes and have donated $10,000 to the Bark Park. The committee voted to accept the donation, and Director Page is moving forward to make this work. It's for water fountains, I think both person and doggy water fountain, so there you go. The rec department's photography contest ends the 30th of March, so we encourage all you island photographers to get your pictures in by the end of the week. April 7th is the Easter egg hunt, starts sharply at 10 o'clock. Last year, we had 800 children in attendance. And our next meeting is April 11th at 4:00 PM in the city council chambers.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the rec committee? Thank you.
Question. Going back to the Crabpot just for a second, do I understand it, Councilman Ward should not be teaching a class, but the Crabpot Players are free to have a play there at the rec center? Is that the way I understand this now? Provided that time is, you know, clear for the rec center and for our community, to create a community and keep a community.
That's how I read it.
Okay, just making sure I clear.
Does anybody have any other interpretation?
I think so.
Okay.
That's the Attorney General's interpretation.
That's the one we got.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's not just programming.
You're right.
It was five months of a lot of hard work.
Good, I want tickets to the next play.
Program musical.
All right. Where am I? My head, personnel committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The personnel committee met on Tuesday, March 13th. All council members were present. I'm sorry, not council members, but committee members were present. City Administrator Tucker and Assistant Administrator Zubin and city clerk. Meeting was called to order. There was no citizen's comments prior to, then we then moved to prioritization of the project's greater than $250,000. Spent quite a bit of time talking about that, and the consensus of the committee was that the beach restoration, disaster recovery, island-wide beach access parking system, rebuild front beach restrooms and dune walkovers, and replacements to include handicap access were the items that were approved. The operating budget and general government and building departments were reviewed and approved. At the end of the meeting, we reviewed the fact that we had received a letter from prior Councilman Duffy nominating Public Works Director Pitts as the employee of the month. The motion was made and unanimously passed, and congratulations to Donnie Pitts.
Hey, hey. Is that science still up?
You know, Donnie doesn't have a very glamorous job, but I'll tell you, I spent two years working with the guy, and I got a lot of respect for him, and he gets it done. So, congratulations, Donnie.
We're here.
Our next meeting will be at 9:00 AM Tuesday, April 10th, at the city hall conference room. At the conclusion of the meeting, we then had another short meeting with our administrator, and we reviewed her appraisal with her. I'm happy to say she obtained an overall grade of 98.2, and that's pretty impressive. Congratulations, Linda.
Thank you.
Very nice. Sweepstakes?
Yes.
I didn't have any sweepstakes. You there?
Boy, one of these days I'll remember it, probably. Anyhow, building department, William Seabrook. Police department, John Keen, Keelen. Fire department, Frederick Treter.
Teeter.
Treter?
Teeter.
Okay, and public works, Willie Powell.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions for personnel?
Just one, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Throughout the, we go to the agenda, it says anticipating interviewing a prosecutor? Do we have one hired, or?
Yes, we do. Chris Skipper has been the select prosecutor.
Okay. Real Property Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Real Property met on March 13th. All members of the committee were present. It was a long meeting, almost four hours, so we covered a lot of data. I'll try to re-brief. First was the beach hole management project is underway. It's moving along very well. If you have not been to the beach, definitely check it out. And there will be no work over Easter weekend, in case anyone's worried about their holiday being disrupted. A lot of discussion on the Marina dredging project. As we talked about in Ways and Means, the key are four areas. There's an easel, on the easel, there's a description of where the areas we're hitting, but it's the field docks behind the Marina, by the Morgan Creek Grill, on both sides of the drainage ditch off the intercoastal, and behind the docks of the tidal wave. These areas are just really hard, compacted sand, and for us to be able to get down to the depth which we need for the dredging, it's, would require the additional hours. So, we discussed that through, and the committee definitely supported that. We also had to replace the dock for tidal wave. You may not know that dock predates Hugo, and they found it on Goat Island after the storm. Anyway, that contract was awarded and also approved during Ways and Means. Landscape plan for city hall was discussed, and basically, the consensus of the public works committee was that to stay close to the original plan for the parking lot when the public works building was, or public safety building was being put together. And one plan from a landscape architect was to do additional work on the public works property, and the committee did not move forward on that. We're still reviewing additional plans, and it's still in work in the committee. We reviewed projects over $250,000, and that came out as during Ways and Means. There was a discussion on the lease with Brian Berg and the two, the Marina and the Marina store. And basically, the issue was a discussion of summary of changes, or standardization of the two lease dates between the two entities, businesses, they're different dates, modification of additional rents, maintenance obligations, and use of the premises. The committee will go through each one of those points and report back to council. We did a budget review, and lastly, was the discussion of procedure on how to handle late rents from our tenants. Next meeting is scheduled for April 9th at 5:00 PM.
Very nice. Any questions?
Yeah, oh, just went out of my head and came back. Is there anything in the budget we could put some sort of motion light, some sort of light on this, on the building that shines down in the parking lot? I personally, when I'm leaving here at night, it is black out there, and not safe, because it's not really all level and stuff. Okay?
Floodlights on the parking that is motion-sensitive, only comes on when this movement, on this building.
Out back.
On the back stairs.
We've got it this way.
In particular.
Oh, you got it on your end.
Yeah, well, okay. That side used to be lit all the time, because the police department was here.
Well, there you go, yeah.
They took the light bulbs when they moved.
That's right, they took everything.
Well, all I can say is we can look at that. We need to keep this building and the people that work in it and the people that visit it safe.
Sure.
And it's not always daylight. We need to be in daylight.
Forget the council people.
And you two, all right, yeah, all right, you guys. You're big and tough. Okay, thank you for the Real Property Committee. No other questions? We had, in your possession, you have minutes from the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission. Any issues, questions? None of you have heard? We've already dealt with the Red Cross for the month, so the next end of business, frankly, I have no executive session, so we have set a date for the 24th of April at 7:00. I'll obtain a motion to adjourn, as long as everybody commits to be at the Easter egg club. It's a move. Motion adjourned and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you all for coming.